Hi, everybody. Can you guys hear me? Because I can't hear anything coming through.
Okay, we're here.
Now I can, now I can hear.
We turn off our things, you know.
We were saying really nice things about you. It's a shame.
Right.
That was muted for all that.
All right, well, we're kind of waiting a few minutes because the lawyer is late. But we're going to start even when if she doesn't show up, right? Want to start? Want to give it a call? Okay. Are we on? Yeah, okay. All right. Okay. Good evening. I would like to call order the meeting of December 10th, 2024 of the City of Campbell Planning Commission. Can we have a roll call?
Okay, before you do that.
Okay.
Wasn't published on the agenda. Two motions, my firm of actions to let her participate. Two commission. One commissioner is published on the agenda as Commissioner Ostrowski. Commissioner Ostrowski. Our attorney has advised you can't just remotely, just remotely.
However, you do need to take two actions to allow Commissioner Ostrowski to participate remotely. So number one is that there is an emergency condition that exists that allows her to participate remotely. And for the record, that's under government code 54953F for those tracking. And two, that the commissioner, due to circumstances, you know, can take advantage of that situation. So it would need a majority vote. I think we can do a two for one here. So the the motion would be that Commissioner Ostrowski is unable to attend, I believe, because of childcare issues. Commissioner Ostrowski can weigh in if there's more to that.
Yeah, that's correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ostrowski. And due to those circumstances, she has to participate remote and it's an emergency and the commission is allowing it.
Okay, do you have a motion to add effect?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Majewski?
Aye.
Can I have Ostrowski vote?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Craig?
Aye.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Aye.
Vice Chair Kamkar?
Aye.
And Chair Zisser?
Aye.
Okay, so with that, no, it's formally, we'll just do one more roll call vote with all the commissioners and then we're ready to go.
Okay. We'll call order. Commissioner Fields?
Present.
Commissioner Majewski?
Aye, here, present, sorry.
Commissioner Ostrowski?
Here.
Commissioner Craig?
Here.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Present.
Vice Chair Kamkar?
Present.
And Chair Zisser?
Here. Okay. My name is Alan Zisser. I'm presently the chair of the Campbell Planning Commission. Minutes, has everybody had a chance to review? Actually, we have two sets of minutes tonight regarding the minutes of November 12. Does anybody have any corrections or changes? I think actually I have. So on the motion. Is that November 12? Which is, does November 12 have the offense on it or is that next one? Yes. On the Milkman Avenue Peel Offense Fence Exception Decision. The motion that is on the minutes said to continue the hearing to a date uncertain, allowing, allowing the applicant staff to explore design adjustments or pursue variance by the following roll call. I felt, I feel if, if the commissioners are agreeable, I feel there was an overwhelming agreement consensus on this that that there was a specific direction we wanted to go in, and I don't think it's reflected in the resolution. And so I am suggesting that it's say to pursue a variance that would allow fence to remain in place along with mitigation of safety, safety concerns for the driveway via use of private property mirrors. And so that to me is more specific to what I believe the commission was in favor of, and I would like to adjust it accordingly if other commissioners are in agreement. Can I get an informal?
Well, I have a question before we vote on that. As opposed to what? What was the?
Well, it was, it was pretty plain. It said, just, it just said, allow, allow the applicant staff to explore design adjustments or pursue a variance. That's, that's all it said, rather than specifically a direction that the commission had, I think, you know, had an overwhelming consensus on.
I think you're right. And I think we've talked through various design changes and that was most of the discussion. And that's when we concluded that design changes were not going to be in compliance and didn't really reflect what was needed.
So are you agreeable to that, Maggie?
I am, yes.
Okay. Do you have other who would agree to that change?
Sounds reasonable.
I think it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was, I believe, what the just was.
All right. So, a bit, did you get that? Okay, so based on that, do I have a motion? This, the approval of this minute, the minutes of
November 12.
I would move to three minutes for November 12 with modifications as suggested by the chair.
And the 26th.
We do them separately? Let's do them separately. Do I have a second for the November 12?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Majewski?
Aye.
Commissioner Ostrowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Craig?
Aye.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Aye.
Vice Chair Kamkar?
Aye.
Chair Zisser?
Aye. Okay, that's the minutes of November 12. Anybody have any changes or modifications to the minutes of November 26? Anybody? Do I have motion?
I've moved to accept the minutes for November 26 as presented in the minutes, in the packet, rather.
Second?
We have a second, we have a motion in a second.
Good, Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Majewski?
Aye.
Commissioner Ostrowski?
Abstain.
Commissioner Craig?
Aye.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Aye.
Commissioner, sorry, Vice Chair Kamkar?
Aye.
And Chair Zisser?
Aye, okay. Both minutes are passed. Communications and gender modifications director Eastwood, do you have any communications modifications or postponements?
No, you have just now your one action meeting item tonight. We do have a remote planner exposure, otherwise no communications or modifications.
Okay, thank you. We're open for our requests. This is the point in our meeting where any member of the public may address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda. They speak up to five minutes, but the planning commission may not take any action today. Is there anyone who'd like to speak either in the chamber or online? Not on an agenda item, okay. Okay, I'll close, I'll close the oral requests. And look to the meeting agenda. Before we start with our regular agenda items, want to provide some information on how we will be conducting the meeting for each item. Each item, I will first announce the item and then ask for staff presentation. After which the commissioners may have some questions for staff. After that, they, that we will open the public hearing and first ask the applicant to speak, followed by any other members of the public. We will, the applicant will have five minutes and members of the public will have two minutes. We will also have any public speakers physically present, speak first, and then anyone attending via Zoom. Members of the planning commission may have questions for the applicant or any of the public speakers. Once we've received all public testimony, we will close the public hearing and the commission will then have discussion and a motion decision based on the nature of the item. Before we start on, on the items, commissioners, do you have any disclosures regarding our agenda tonight?
Visited the site?
Anybody online? No? Okay, I also visited the site. Okay, first item. Item number three on the agenda, 1611 Van Dusen Lane, right now architectural review permit, removal permit. Public hearing to consider the application by Darko Kovik. Excuse me, I got that wrong. To allow the construction of a 5,937 square foot two-story home with two-car garage, one-car garage and front of your porches, the tree removal permit. To allow the removal of one protected tree on property located at 1611 Van Dusen Lane, the application under consideration includes the site and architectural review permit and a tree removal permit, file number PLN 20Q4-40. Staff is recommending the site being categorically exempt from CEQA. Planning Commission action is final unless appealed in writing to the city clerk. Within 10 calendar days, project planner on this is Nishant. See you on.
Okay, thank you, everyone. My name is Nishant. I'm the planner for this project. This project is located at 1611 Van Dusen Lane, on the south side of Van Dusen Lane between York Avenue and Highway 85. It is a 14,295 square foot R19 lot in the Santa Moss area neighborhood plan and is currently undeveloped. The applicant is proposing to build a new 5,937 square foot two-story home with a two-car garage, one-car garage, and front and rear porches. There will also be a 683 square foot ADU on the site that is not subject to this permit. Project conforms with all setback, FAR lot coverage and height standards. The design of the home is consistent with surrounding homes and will include a hipped metal roof, stucco, fiber cement, and brick veneer siding, vinyl window framing, and birch balcony railings. The SARC reviewed this project on November 12 and recommended planning commission approval. Project is removing one protected tree, which requires a tree removal permit. One tree will remain and seven new trees will be planted for a total of eight, which is more than the required seven. Trees will be planted at the rear and sides of the home and shrubs will be planted on all sides. Between the use of screening trees, consistent window size and distribution, and conformance with height and setback standards, privacy impacts will be minimized. Staff received one comment regarding privacy concerns and three comments regarding some combination of concerns about runoff on the site and unpermitted work, parking, and accumulation of junk on site. Staff explained to these residents that the proposed home is meeting all development standard requirements and, as discussed, is unlikely to create privacy impacts. Staff also explained that the project will be subject to conditions of approval requiring a stormwater management system and grading and drainage plans that must be reviewed by the public works department, which will ensure that drainage issues do not continue. Lastly, staff also explained that storage or disposal of junk on the site is not an approved use and will be a violation of conditions of approval and would be grounds for a code violation. The site has received seven code violations since 2003 regarding some form of pileup of junk and debris or parking on site. All of these cases have been closed. Staff has made all necessary findings and is recommending approval of the project. I can pull up the site plan if it's helpful.
Okay. Before I go further, before we go further, I failed to ask, I know you mentioned SARC in it, but does any, does anybody from the SARC committee have anything to add?
We did hear and, you know, we had a pretty good discussion regarding the neighbors and some of the complaints that they had lodged, but, you know, we received satisfactory answers to all of our concerns. I don't, you know, nothing in my mind.
Yeah, same. I think the complaints I don't foresee happening once there's a nice home built there. It was just a property that had been built on for a while, but nice looking property that we're pretty enthusiastic about.
Okay. I have one more question before we go into question, questions from the other commissions. There's an ADU on this and it's not noted in the, in the description of the item or in your presentation, is that correct? There isn't any?
It was noted in the presentation, but it's not part of the permit. So we have some information about it in the staff report, but that ADU is not subject to this site and architectural review.
All right. Why don't we start with those online? Commissioner Ostrawski, do you have any questions?
My questions are mostly about the, the code violations, but if SARC is satisfied, then I am too. Thank you.
I had a question about the protected tree. What, what kind of tree is it? Can you elaborate on that a little bit more on the location?
I will have to confirm that.
I know it's a coffee berry.
Yeah, it's a coffee berry tree and it's a multi-trunk tree with one trunk that's at least 12 inches in diameter, which qualifies it as a protected tree. That's what's being removed. And it's located right here in the back of the site.
Let's see, and what, why does, why does that tree need to be removed to?
It's kind of a confusing situation with the ADU. So that's where the ADU is going to be located. Because that ADU is not subject to this permit and meets all of the objective standards that it needs to meet, we cannot require retention of this tree if it would make development of the ADU infeasible.
And is it a protected tree only because of the trunk size or is it a protected tree because there's a list of specific species that are to be protected?
This one is protected because of the trunk size. We do have a list, but this species is not on the protective list. It's based on the trunk size.
Thank you.
And the fact that the site is undeveloped.
That's, that's back in the back section of the parcel.
Yep.
In the middle.
Yeah.
Okay. I see. Any other?
The, I had one more question about the ADU height. I, I noticed the packet said that the height limit was 18 feet. I was, I thought, I thought the height limit for the ADU was higher, but it depended on the height of the property itself.
So this ADU is what we call a statewide exempt ADU. A statewide exempt ADU is an ADU that meets certain development standards, and if it does, then it qualifies for essentially a more streamlined permitting process. So the height limit for qualifying as an exempt ADU is 18 feet.
And the square footage is?
680 square feet.
So it's, it's under the 800. Whatever, whatever the state standard is, right?
Yeah, that's, that's 800 square feet.
I have a question.
Yeah, let me, let me go. Maggie, was that all you had?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I don't have it.
Commissioner Field, no? Commissioner Buckbinder?
Just to be clear, the only, it sounds like the only thing here that's really substantive is that there have been a whole bunch of code violations. It doesn't seem like it's been our purview to penalize somebody for that, but like, when people have complaints, they take it up with code enforcement and that's like, it's a whole close look about that, right? This is not a situation where it's like just a problem and they have no recourse and so forth?
No, so there have been complaints to code enforcement and the code enforcement has worked with the property owner to resolve those issues. All of those code cases have been closed.
Okay, that's the only thing I was curious about. Thank you.
Yeah, Nishant, I, I got a question, but maybe it's all I ask the, the property owner. It might be more appropriate, but I'll ask you as well though, because that's a really a pretty big lot, but the street frontage is pretty narrow. Do you know if, if this was considered for an SB9 type of lot split at all, or was that impossible because of the narrowness of the street frontage or?
I couldn't tell you right off the bat if it's impossible based on the, the lot width, but the applicant didn't propose an SB9 project. I'd have to look into the standards to answer the first part.
Okay, I just was kind of curious because it is such a big lot. And my one, my one other question, when we brought up the tree, and I know the tree that we're getting rid of really doesn't look all that grand, but right next door is, it is a neighboring property. It's not on the same site, but right, right next to this, this property is a real majestic tree, about a 70 footer, I estimated it. So I don't, what, so do we have provisions in our, in our approval that makes sure that, that a neighboring tree that's right next to a site that's being developed is somehow protected?
I don't actually know for certain about that. Rob, would you be able to help out with that question?
So just to clarify, Commissioner Craig, this would be inadvertently during construction, they damaged the adjacent tree to the plant.
It's, yeah, because it's right next door to this.
Well, it's, it's, it's not only a huge, it's a huge, I don't know if it's a redwood, but it's a huge fir tree. And, and a very large portion of the tree hangs over significantly into the property. I noticed that too. So I have the same question.
Yes, I was just wondering if we have, if they, if they're, they're not going to be allowed to trim that tree is what I guess we were asking, whether that's going to be protected.
Yeah, it started with this, I mean, if the intent was to trim that tree to allow the construction to the point that it would be removed, they would have to get a tree removal from an authorization. So if that's not proposed, there shouldn't be preventions in place to make sure that.
I guess I'm asking even more in general, even beside, this is an example of, of a site that there's no tree issue on the site, but there's really, really nice tree that almost borders the site. Do we have any mechanism or any, any language? Because we have a lot of language in it, you know, a lot of legalities that we put in these things. Do we have anything to guard against these kind of?
Yeah, and it's been done many times in my use, my, I mean, there's protected resources, no, no boundaries of property line. So you're, if it's, the conditions aren't in there, commission's wellness right, you require a conditional approval, install tree protection measures during construction to ensure that the adjacent tree was not prone to the point of, you know.
Okay, so Nishant, is there anything in the boilerplate that would cover the adjacent tree in terms of protection presently?
Let me pull up our conditions. We don't have conditions specific to trees, but we can add something to the conditions of approval.
Yeah, I know we had a discussion on this a few meetings back and the question was around the property line and the, and if the branches go over the property line, I think kind of the common maybe misconception is, at least as far as Bill explained, it was that the, if the branches are over the property line, it's not actually the case that that neighbor is allowed to cut down the tree or cut down the branches, but one might believe that they do have that right. So I think putting a condition of approval will be important to clarify that and then taking measures to protect the tree during construction.
Yeah, I got on page 30 of the package. It's the back right corner of the, so it's, I guess that's the backyard area. And this shows a tree on the adjacent property and then three little trees, I guess, that would be planted. But that, that really doesn't exactly represent how that tree is overhanging the property from my estimation. So, so that tree in the back corner of the other property shows it overhanging a little bit, but I tell you, it's overhanging it a lot. I was out there yesterday. And so, yeah, so I, I think the question is whether you want to provide assurance that that won't be.
On page 25, there are, there is language about the standards for tree protection during construction, which I think is part of the city code. Most cities have a code for that. Which talks about fencing to protect the root system and that kind of thing.
Well, that's a question of whether or not that's on the property or on somebody else's property.
Right.
Is that right to somebody else's property, Nishant?
I don't actually know the answer to that question. It's something that we can, can look into and get you a clear answer.
Only try, just add some language, but I, just, just for the record though, I was looking at that neighboring tree, not just the overhanging branches, but also, you know, the roots and construction.
Yeah, yeah, it's really close to the, it's right there.
Anyway, thanks.
Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So when the attorney's ready, I have some questions regarding neighbor's trees. So we're talking about overhanging branches, you know, of from a neighbor onto property. So so, so my understanding is that if a neighbor's tree's branches are on my property, I cannot trim them?
No, you can trim.
I can trim.
You can, yes.
And then what about if it's? Let's see. Then Nishant said that that tree, even though one of the trunks, it's, it's a multi-trunk tree, one of the trunks is 12 inches or larger. Even though that's the case, that makes it a protected tree, it could be taken out so that the ADU can occupy that space. So is this like a waiver or a concession issue or how is that possible? For a protected tree to be taken out, so?
So they have requested a permit for that to remove the trees?
I just want to clarify with Nishant here.
Two different trees.
On the plans and the proposals, is it very clear, proposals to remove the neighbor's tree?
No, not, not the neighbor's tree, the, the tree at the, at the rear of the property.
We knew that.
Okay.
That was the question.
No, no, we're talking about the, the tree on the site that, that would be removed for the ADU to occupy that space.
Am I to say that that was the tree that was subject to the tree removal permit? Is that not to me? That is correct. Okay, so that is a request from the applicant to, to remove the tree.
Tree and they replace it somewhere else like that?
Correct. So they have to get a permit in order to remove that.
Got it, got it. Okay, those were big.
Yeah, just a clarif, clarifying question though. So Bill made some statements a few meetings back when we asked the question about can you cut the branches on your neighbor's property when they're crossing your property line? And his answer was, it depends and not exactly. And his answer was, it depends and not exactly. Wasn't that clear or yes?
But my understanding of the law is that, yes, you can remove that uh, overhanging branches that are on your property. Uh, can look into the matter and talk to Bill about that to make sure that we're providing you with clear instruction.
That would be great, thank you.
I have some input. I'm certified arborist and I do these kind of reports for other projects, just not within Campbell, so I don't know exactly the legality side, but um, usually the law or the standard for arborists is if you're going to remove more than about twenty percent of the tree, you're going to damage it to the point where that tree is going to struggle and possibly die. So if you're going to trim more than twenty five percent or whatever is written into the city code, um, that's kind of the limit. But again, that's not what's in the Campbell code necessarily. It might be more, might be less.
Yeah, and I can clarify that. The Campbell code does have a prohibition on what it calls severe trimming, which is defined by the ANSI, which is the National Standards for Urban uh, urban tree maintenance. Uh, so as a general rule, as Commissioner Majewski said, twenty percent removal uh, that applies to any person who removes the tree. So while uh, the branches that overhang the property are within the rights of the property owner of that particular lot, if they do trim the tree in a way that violates the municipal code, they will um, have to uh, uh, make up for that in term in terms of one of the violations that we have within our code, which is either payment of a fee or planting additional trees on site.
Uh, this does, this doesn't apply to all trees, though, right?
It only applies to protected trees.
Protected trees, okay. And protected trees, if the trunk is more than twelve inches, becomes protected even even if it's like a weed tree?
It depends on the zoning district, which the tree is in. So within these R one properties, which is this property and the neighbor's property, there's four protected species. Um, and then those that have been identified on previous landscaping plans that are over twelve inches.
Sure.
So we haven't identified that this neighbor's tree is protected or not, right?
No.
No, 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 well, it's it's a really big tree, so it may be protected because it's on site.
Do you uh, are you able to see what the species is, Commissioner Majewski? It looks um.
It's a coast redwood.
Okay, which would be protected.
So uh, so there there will have to be care taken in terms of the tree.
Correct, and City of Campbell does have construction um, requirements for tree protection during construction, and that is pertains to uh, any property, even if you're not doing the active construction on site, it's just protection during any construction. So they would have to comply with those standards as I believe the project is currently conditioned.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Um, I I guess we can move on to uh, getting up for public. The applicant would like to come forward and speak. Yeah, I have five minutes? No? Do we have any? Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
I was just going to ask you the one question about if considering a lot split, but you'd have to come up and answer that. Can you come up here, though? I'm sorry. Just curious.
Early on, we tried to um, do like a flag lock type of thing, but it was too narrow.
It was too narrow.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So that was a consideration.
Curious, thank you.
Yeah, stay there, stay there. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to ask about the tree. Okay, have you have you taken in consideration the that overhang of that tree?
Mm hmm.
And what was?
We're far enough away and where the ADU is going to be there is not that close to that the actual trunk. And it's not that high, so it doesn't affect the tree branches. Yes, there are going to be some trimming to it because it is overhanging quite a bit, so. But I don't, it's a nice tree, I don't, there's no need to really.
But it's it's looks like it's going to overhang about that portion of the property that's the backyard, right? On that side of the property.
Yeah, and we don't.
No, there's no structure there, right?
The, no, part of ADU is going to be near that tree, but it's not right next to it or anything. We're further from the from the size setback than is required and, you know, the trees are a little bit further back.
Okay, anybody have any more questions for the applicant? Thank you. Um, do we have any um, members of the public? Anybody else wanting to speak?
If you're online and want to speak, you can raise your hand.
No? That's not. Is there a no?
Confirming uh, no one online wants to speak, if they do so, please raise your hand now.
Oh, two, okay. Are you there?
Okay, Carmelita, you can speak now, you have. You've been unmuted. Carmelita, you can speak now.
Carmelita, are you there?
Carmelita, you've muted yourself. If you'd like to speak, you can unmute now.
Are you there now? She keeps going back and forth. Was was she one of the people that wrote something in?
Yes, she was one of the neighbors that submitted a comment with some concerns about drainage due to the elevation of the property.
Uh, okay. Oh, let me assume that she's going to ask about that and and we can, can we answer that question? Can we be answer that question about the drainage?
Yeah, her her question in the in the letter that's in the attachment was whether the lot would be leveled before building to deal with some of the drainage issues. The answer is yes, the project will go through a grading process and grading plans. Grading and drainage plans will be reviewed by the Public Works Department.
Do we, do we know whether or not they're going to grade down to the same level of the of the adjacent properties?
I think that would be a question for the applicant. I don't, I don't know exactly.
You guys have an answer for that?
We'll do a little bit of grading, but it's not really necessary. The the more northern property is basically at the same level as our property. On the other side, to the left, that's a little bit lower, but it's not much. I mean, it's a, it is a fairly flat side, so. And there will be for sure drainage, just like in another project.
Okay. Thank you. Since we couldn't get Carmelita, hopefully that answers the the question. Um, okay, so we since we have nobody else, um, I'm going to close that and uh, go to um, uh, Commissioner Comments. Uh, Commissioner Fields, you want to start?
Uh, supportive of this project and right, uh, yeah, nothing, nothing to add.
Okay, Commissioner Buckbinder?
I don't particularly have anything to add. I generally don't have strong feelings about like architectural issues. It sounds like the tree issues won't truly take care of.
Okay, yeah, I think the project's fine, you know, nice design and meets all the criteria. I I guess I I wouldn't mind putting in a little extra, I don't know if maybe the attorney, if we can be vague about it, just some kind of extra language, say uh, to here, to try to guarantee protections for that this particular neighboring tree because it is such a majestic trees. Could we just leave that kind of vague? Just say that we we highlighted that or noted that. So I think in in a motion, I think we should kind of. Commissioner Majewski?
Yeah, it sounds like um, they've done everything they're supposed to and I have nothing to add.
Commissioner Ostrowski?
Um, I I think I just think uh, what we talked about with respect to the tree next door and making sure there were um, clear conditions around that. Uh, that's the only comment I have.
Okay. Commissioner Campcar?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I also feel comfortable that they're doing a great job. We got a great design and they will make sure that they are good neighbors. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, uh, yeah, I don't have anything to add. I I I'm supportive of the project and um, so why don't we go if we can have a motion that includes a consideration for the tree, I'd be glad to take that.
Before you do, Nishant, I just want to make sure you heard that as the project planner, you can add conditions for the adjacent tree, tree protection.
Yeah, we'll add conditions and then send them to you, to the commission.
Well, I'll just make a motion that the Campbell Planning Commission, Dr. Resolution, a reference attachment, approving a site and architectural review permit, tree removal permit, PLN twenty twenty four dash forty, to allow the construction of a five thousand nine hundred thirty seven square foot two story home with two with a two car garage, one car with two car garage or one car garage in front or rear porches and a tree removal permit to allow the removal of one protected tree and also with the stipulation with the added language to guarantee protection of the neighboring uh, protected tree.
Have a second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second.
Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Majewski?
Aye.
Commissioner Ostrowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Cray?
Aye.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Aye.
Vice Chair Campcar?
Aye.
Chair Zisser.
Aye. I have passage now, Miss Lee. Good luck. Okay, new business. Uh, meeting schedule. Commissioner, do you want to approve the proposed twenty twenty five meeting schedule?
I I think Commissioner Davis wanted a meeting on on Thanksgiving this year, didn't you?
I mean, I will, I I have two comments. One, it says December nineteenth, but I think that's a typo, it's December ninth. Uh, and then I, if it was up to me, we wouldn't do the meeting the Tuesday of Thanksgiving week. But does anyone else? If no one else feels strongly, um, I I, my opinion on this is I don't want like us to make a whole bunch of people wait, but I think if we have something like tonight, I would be happy to skip this. If we have something like, you know, three major apartment buildings coming up, I would show up on that Tuesday. Is there any way to communicate that? Unless it's important. So two things, we'll correct December ninth. Uh, my professional advice would be to keep the meeting and of course, if we have no business, I have. It's harder to put a meeting on, it's easier to take off. Even if there are business items, can we push it unless it's? Say that's your wish, if the staff discretion. Uh, but again, our professional advice would be to leave the meeting on and per staff discretion, we can cancel a meeting if there's not enough imperative business to warrant the meeting.
I would suggest we do it after now, especially since we only do one meeting.
I don't know why, but I'm having a really hard time hearing everybody.
Okay.
Into the microphone.
All right, we were discussing about whether we take off uh, one uh, one of the 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 meeting nearest Thanksgiving, but uh, most of the consensus, most of the consensus is that we'll just leave it on for now. And then it's always easier to cancel a meeting than put it back on the schedule. So um, we're talking about we doing the agenda as is with the correction of of it's being it's the air was December nineteenth, it should be December ninth, December ninth on the schedule and that will approve it as is in that respect.
Yeah, I mean, my my only comment would be that, you know, that whole week is really, um, the kids all have it off school. Um, it's a big travel week, not just for the Wednesday through Sunday, but the entire week in general based because of that. Um, I think from the applicant's perspective, they may also be in that same situation. Um, I had intended to be at that meeting, but my family came to town and uh, so I wasn't able to make it. So I think that's just one of the considerations of putting a meeting like this on the calendar for the week of Thanksgiving. So I I agree with Commissioner Fields.
Okay. Um, well, you're the only one with kids in school. Yeah, but that's that's, you know, I I get it. Um, I I would rather just leave it on, then we can like when we get close, if we want to cancel the meeting, cancel the meeting.
Yeah, and that's a good option, too.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
All right, all right, do I have a motion? Oh, okay. Um, so.
All those in favor of approving the twenty twenty five planning commission calendar with the uh, update to the December nineteenth meeting date, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? No, okay. So it's it's passed. Okay. Election of the twenty twenty five chair and vice chair. Um, okay, I I was unclear as to, we we do these separately and do we do the chair first or the vice chair first?
Let me do the chair first.
Yeah.
We don't have to do them separately even. We did last.
We can do the one motion?
Yeah.
Okay. You take that.
You know, Chair Zisser, if I may?
Oh, go ahead.
May may I, uh, I would like to nominate our vice chair, Ed Campcar, as the next chairperson, and I would like to nominate our Commissioner Davis Fields as our next vice chair if they're willing, and I would also like to thank Chair Zisser for great work over, really, we had some pretty tough meetings. It was a long year, it's a good year and you did a great job, so. But I would just make those motions, uh.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor of electing uh, Vice Chair Campcar and Commissioner Fields as the Chair and Vice Chair for the twenty twenty five calendar year, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Did we say good luck or is that?
And and I I would just like uh, as outgoing chair to thank everyone, all the staff, all the planners, uh, Ken's not here tonight, but Rob and Bill as well uh, for um, this year in terms of your support and cooperation and commissioners in particular. Uh, what I what I like about our commission, which I guess is not necessarily the truth everywhere, is that we're all uh, respectful and civil with each other and I I I think we do a real good job in that respect and in uh, respecting each other's positions and even when we disagree. So, thank you for the year. I'll be down at the at the end of the table in the future.
Except you have to give the gavel to Commissioner Campcar.
There you go.
Very much.
We have two point SARC numbers.
Do I need to move?
No, 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 no.
No, no. All right. Got to give him the thing to.
Thank you, give me something to. Okay, so. So does he need to close and I open or?
You have one business item left, which is to appoint the SARC members for twenty twenty five as your first action.
Okay, so um, uh, I was going to suggest Commissioner Davis Fields as the Chair of the SARC and Commissioner Corey Majewski as the Vice Chair of the SARC. Is, is that okay? Any, any, anybody opposed?
Well, have someone second that?
I second. I have a question, can I attend remotely?
Good point.
Yeah.
Happy to do so, but just want to make sure that's not going to be a huge issue.
Okay.
Just recommend.
Yeah.
Okay, so recommending that Commissioner Majewski, well, any commissioner can attend the just can attend remotely if they have the um, like instructors not or explanations. Um, okay, so so we have a motion, is was there a second?
Second.
Yep.
From Ostrowski?
A second. Oh, I'm sorry, Maggie.
Okay.
Yes, I seconded.
Okay, all those in favor of electing Commissioner Fields and Commissioner Majewski as the SARC members for the twenty twenty five calendar year, say aye.
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 Okay.
Community director, did you have a?
I do, I do have a few comments. So if you'll indulge me in light of his service. Provide our former chair, Zisser, the plact honor is 2024.
Beautiful.
We only get the best for the chairs. So let me give this to you from staff and if it's okay, I don't know how we manage this with the online folks, but we'll, we'll Photoshop you in. If it's okay, take a quick group photo?
Sure.
Okay, great.
Right, it's a gavel.
Gavel.
All right, let's look at that.
That's an award winner.
No, I don't. Not, not in my name. Oh, it says in recognition of service, not service.
French. Pronunciation of that.
I have a thing about this.
That's a D min in this mistake.
We wanted to make sure you were reading it. Okay, just a few report outs. I think I, I think the commission knows this, talk about last meeting. Measure K did pass. I think we had talked about the last meeting, just want to let you know that. Current Mayor Landry does term out this year and her last meeting will be next meeting. And incoming council member is Terry Hines. So just wanted to make sure you're aware of the transition from one council seat. Number two, you'll remember, I think a few months back, we brought you an AD ordinance and the whole idea was to bring it up to par with state laws and make sure we're in line with state laws. I hate to report, right before that was about to go to council, we did get more feedback from HCD, which said there are other parts of the ordinance that need to be changed. That did change the schedule and the changes are so dramatic that we would have to get back to the planning commission. So the project planner working on it, of course, is Larissa. She is working on it. I did reach out to HCD, was a little unhappy because of such a late hit and we've been asking for feedback consistently. And they've talked to us a little bit. They did note that they are releasing a technical guidebook by the end of this year. And with that, we probably want to read it thoroughly and make sure that we update ordinance to be in line with that. In addition to the new state laws going back. So, long story short, revised AD ordinance will probably be coming back to you sometime in spring, February, March and come back. But you know, this position of that. Number one. Number two, in January, we don't really have any business items yet on the agenda. I had asked our Recreation and Parks Director to come give an update on the Parks Master Plan. So they are preparing a master plan for developing new parks in the city, opportunities, expanding parks for the next 30 years, finding a park space for existing growing population. So she was going to come and just provide an update on that. It's not a business item. And I thought we could just do one or two minor things on maybe some training on some new state laws and maybe just talk through a work plan. Again, none of these are business items. But just want to see if the commission still be open to having a meeting just with sort of those more study session items.
For me, I, that feels like actually substantive. I really like to talk about policy stuff and what's going on sort of in the longer term as opposed to just doing very, very small, very focused project stuff all the time. So I'm in favor of that.
I'm, I'm in favor.
Great.
Yeah, in favor.
And last but not least, I'm going to replug the League of California Cities Planning Commissioners Academy. That's because I'm now vice president of, of a committee at the league. So it's March 5th to 7th. It's in Santa Rosa, nice wine country. We do have budgets that would pay for your travel, for you staying, if you'd like to stay overnight up there in beautiful Santa Rosa and then also for the, the League Planning Commissioners Academy itself. So I do know under our ordinance code, new commissioners have to go to two years of it. I'll check in with Corey Majewski and Davis Fields, if you bet those are not. But for the rest of you, I looked at the agenda with my very subjective opinions and think it's a great training session for anyone, anywhere in their planning commission career. So I'll, I'll push out that information in the next week. I just know it's.
What's it called again?
The Planning Commissioners Academy run by the league.
League of Cities.
And I'm only worried that the longer you wait, you know, the hotel rooms fill up if you really want to go. So it'd be nice to go ahead and book those.
Could you send the, I think last time we got an email with the hotel book. I think I'm going to do it.
Okay, great.
Share the, like.
Yeah, we'll give you the links to the, well, we can sign you up for the conference itself and then I'll give you links to sign up for the hotel room or facilitate that too.
Absolutely, yep.
So look for that. I'll push that out later this week, early next week.
That's like a Wednesday through Friday kind of?
That is a Wednesday through Friday.
Question.
Yeah.
So Mayor Landry is retired, is terming out.
Right.
Do we know if vice, vice mayor becomes mayor or not necessarily?
On the next meeting, next Tuesday, they'll take that vote. I'd just say as a matter of practice, my observation is, and that's usually the case. But next Tuesday, they would decide that.
Then we will know. Okay. Wonderful.
It's good research. That's all I have.
Thank you so much. Anything else? No? Have a happy holiday. Merry Christmas. Glad to see you guys.
Yes.
With that, we adjourn.
All right, thank you. Bye, everybody.
Thanks, guys. I'm terribly sorry.